Well, the meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a hybrid planning zoning meeting hosted, well, not in person. It is all Zoom meeting.
Virtual, all virtual.
During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. When you first enter the Zoom meeting, it will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you to. Please be aware of your camera if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others when, if you choose. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the mini host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything that is said by the commission members, even if you're muted and or your camera is not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as is published according to the Governor Lamont's executive order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application. Explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through public meeting calendar page of the town website. W W W dot Guilford C T dot gov and also through a direct rank link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application. If there are any, there will be clarifying questions from the commissioner. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, after clarifying questions, those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition, the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of the commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Ten, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling Planning and Zoning Department at two zero three four five three eight zero three nine or by emailing planning dot zoning at Guilford C T dot gov after nine A M. Eleven, all actions taken up applications tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking seated tonight. This evening, see this evening are the following members, who will please identify themselves. Kevin Clark.
Here.
Bill Freeman.
Here.
I don't see Ted. Phil Johnson.
Welcome.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
And I am Scott Edmund. Also, we have Larry Zolo.
Here.
Larry, you will be seated tonight. Staff present are Jamie Stein, town planner. I have to update my sheet Nigel Wells, correct? Mills, Nigel Mills, Assistant Town Planner. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice. It's how Frank Reader, it's the legal notice, please.
Could you mind or Jamie put that up for me? My phone was hijacked.
Oh, boy.
Yep.
Thank you. Legal notice from the Gopher Planning and Zoning Commission notices hereby given that the Gopher Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on November second, two thousand and twenty-two at seven thirty P M via the Zoom platform by using the following link. There's the U R L. The following applications will be heard. William and Michelle Gilson, Two Heart Landing Map one oh six lot eighteen dash three zone R eight special permit application for an accessory dwelling unit. Charles Kermey, three sixteen Little Meadow Road map eighty-six lot two zone R five special permit application for earth removal operation section two seventy-three dash sixty-six of the Guilford zoning regulations. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the planning and zoning office and on the town's website Guilford C T dot gov. At this hearing, persons may attend via web connection and shall be heard. All written correspondence shall be submitted to the planning dot zoning at Guilford C T dot gov twenty-four hours prior to the meeting day. Documents are available at the planning and zoning office dial two oh three four five three eight zero three two for assistance dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this eleventh day of October, two thousand and twenty-two. Scott Edmund, Chairman.
Thank you for sir. Would I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Second, I'll give it to Frank. All in favor.
Hi. Hi.
Oh, we got Ted Sands. Welcome Ted Sands.
Hi.
All right. First item on our agenda is William and Michelle Gibson, Two Heart Landing Map one oh six lot eighteen dash three zone R eight special permit application for an accessory dwelling unit. Do we have anyone represent the Gilsons?
That would be me. Hi, Michelle Gilson.
Please say your name and address to the record and then present us with your application.
Um, it's Michelle Gilson and it's Two Heart Landing Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven.
Great.
And my application is for an accessory apartment um, to put on my property um, for an apartment for my mom as an in-law apartment.
Two drawings, put up.
Uh, yes, we do. I'm happy to share them, Michelle, and you can just walk me through them. I'll bring up the survey or site plan first.
Thank you.
Are you all seeing the survey?
Yes. Okay.
So basically, Michelle, do you want to just explain for us what you're, what, what we're, the commission is looking at?
Oh, sure. Sorry. This is my first time. I'm sorry. Um, so right here is my, this is a shared driveway. My home is right here and right across from here, you would see the gravel driveway on the bottom, and that leads to um, this modular building that I'm planning to put in um, as the accessory apartment. Um, it's a little under five hundred square feet. Um, and it's directly right across um, this shared driveway, which we own this portion of, and it's right across from my house.
Was the plan, is there, I assume there's functioning facilities? I want to know what's the plan for Sept Day?
I've already gone through the septic process um, with Shirley and I was, my house had a large enough septic system to carry this. Um, and we've already gotten the approval from the state.
Is there, is there another?
There's another drawing with the septic system shown on it, I think, isn't there?
I believe, yes, there is.
Is there another house at the end of this road? Like, are there other cars that are driving through on this road?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
But that is your lot that it's on, correct?
Correct. So the driveway is on my lot.
Thank. We've, there's no other immediate questions. We have uh, memos here or, I hear a question?
No, not yet.
All right, uh, let's see, let's grab memos. Hold on a second. Well, those are all little meadow memos.
God, we do have one.
Most, yeah, do you have one you could put up maybe?
Yeah, again, just one second.
Uh, Mr. Phil Johnson, would you please read the memo for us?
Uh, as soon as it pops up.
Yep, one second.
To Planning and Zoning Committee, Shirley Minkins, R S, October twenty-eighth, Two Heart Landing Map one oh six lot eighteen oh three, one bedroom accessory apartment. The Health Department has approved a one bedroom accessory apartment at the above address. Essential system exception has been granted by the Department of Public Health to tie in the waste from the accessory structure to the existing system and engineered plan dated nine twenty-one twenty-two was approved by the Health Department demonstrating a code complying area on the lot for a six foot, six bedroom home and a one bedroom accessory apartment. Scroll, please.
Uh, sure. I think that's it.
Shirley Minkins, R S, sorry.
Thank you. Um. The Jamie, was there more drawings showing, is this a, like, is this a tiny house effectively? Is that what the look?
Yeah, it's a, but four hundred and seventy-seven square feet, I think, Michelle.
Uh, yeah.
And it's a modular structure. We do have some.
Is it gonna be on foundation or is it on?
On foundation.
Okay.
Going to be a shared well as well?
Yes. So the water line is drawn on one of the drawings, so the water line would be connected from my house to, to the structure across the driveway.
How is, just.
See if I can find that.
Not that it's relative to our, how is it heated?
Um, the heating system will be separate. Um, it's the uh, the heating system that would be placed on to the, onto the, the wall.
Heat pump. Heat pump, yeah, all right. Uh.
And it also have its own water heater as well.
No, that's the old one.
This is the, I think this is the old plan. Is this the one that shows the septic, Michelle, or is there a?
Um, no, there should be another septic. That's the first plan that I had to change that had the ten feet.
Right, yes, okay.
So there should be another, they, they did attach a new septic plan with the site plan that we updated yesterday.
Okay, I think these are the house. It must be in the revised folder.
Uh.
I think it's the second one.
The second.
Oh, septic plant, thank you. There we go.
Yeah.
Zoom in a little bit.
It's a very concise septic system.
Okay.
That's showing the water line here.
Basically, you, you wrote, it looks like you rotated the orientation of the building in order to accommodate.
Yes, I originally, I, there was a miscommunication, maybe on the size of what the structure was going to be, and I was told it was supposed to be ten feet from the exterior line, so that's why my first design was with the ten feet. But um, I read the memo yesterday and called and got it taken care of so that it was at the twenty feet when we had the meeting today.
Thank you. Sorry, just asking.
Uh, yeah, so it goes tank and I guess. Great. Any other questions from commissioners?
Um, so it looks, is the septic to the left?
Yes. Well, is a tank that then it would get pumped to the?
The leaching fields?
Yes.
Got it.
Um.
I think it's all gravity. No, I don't think there's any pump.
Right.
Sorry, yeah, no, just misspoke. Well, I think this is exactly why we have kind of liberalized our accessory apartment dwelling units regulations, I mean, to allow for just this type of thing.
Yeah.
Is there any drawings of it? I mean, not that it is critical to the process budget, it's just curious.
It's not a trailer, right?
We have a whole slew of them.
Yeah, I mean, we should look at it because it's part of a special permit.
Plans.
Oh, I didn't zoom. I didn't scroll down. It's like, I'm not gonna read that. Oh, I like that.
My mom's only four feet tall, so it's perfect.
Sure, she's happy. You just let us know that, too.
How old is your mother?
Uh, she'll be sixty-four.
Ah. Spring check.
Yeah.
She'll be with you forever.
She's been living with me almost eight years now, so.
Ah.
We're, we're ready, but she's a big help.
You're, you're getting her out of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she has to leave the bedroom, walk through the kitchen area and around the corner to get to the bathroom at night?
Yes.
Hmm. Well, that's because you need it as a guest bath, I guess, as well. Otherwise, it would be the other way around.
Why would, just a silly question, why wouldn't you put the bathroom closer to the bedroom and the closet on the other side, but that, that, that doesn't make any difference at all? Just throwing it out.
I actually just.
It's pretty small. You can walk pretty clear.
It's actually as big as um, a room that I have in my house, so it is, it is pretty small. I did go with the design that um, I was presented with. I made a couple modifications, but as far as the layout went, I kept the layout the same.
Yeah, it looks great. Great. Uh, any other questions from commissioners? Uh, thank you, Jamie, for sharing. All right, so we'll throw to any questions from the public. Questions first. Uh, seen none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this? And is there anyone that would want to speak in opposition to this application? Uh, not seeing any. I throw to commissioners, how do we feel about the option that we have to waive a second public hearing on this, a special permit?
Make a motion to waive it.
A second.
Motion from Phil, second from Frank, discussion? Okay.
Looks straightforward.
Do roll call votes. Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Uh, Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes, sir.
Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
And I will, yes. Uh. Any other things we want to discuss or do we want to close the public hearing on this item?
Take a motion to close.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank Frank. Uh, discussion? All right, Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Larry Zolo.
Yes.
And I will, yes. Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll make a motion on this tonight. Thanks. Appreciate your time. Next one that we have on the agenda is Charles Kermey, three sixteen Little Meadow Road, map eighty-six lot two zone R five special permit application for earth removal operation section two seventy-three dash sixty-six of the Guilford zoning regulations. So anyone here to represent Charles Kermey?
Yes, Jeffrey Beatty for the applicant, Mr. Kermey. Good evening.
Well.
Uh, I'm here with Mr. Kermey and Todd Anderson. He'll be presenting to the commission with regard to this application. So, so this is the, uh, Mr. Kermey's residence at three sixteen Little Meadow Road. Uh, and uh, he's bought the property in uh, in the fall, September of two thousand and twenty, and since purchasing it, he's been um, planting trees. Uh, he's planted between a third and a half acre of fruit trees on the property. And as he was growing them, he was, you know, dri- uh, drawing water from his well to help them grow and noticed that that was having an impact on the amount of water that he was able to use for normal household living. So it's, his property is located in a wet, or, or, there's a wetlands on his property. Since the use of the property for agricultural purposes is permitted as of right, we went to the inland wetlands commission in July to request uh, their uh, uh, sign off on excavating the property within the wetlands to create a pond to generate sufficient water to serve not only the uh, trees that Mr. Kermey had already planted, but the trees that he intends to plan, to plant on the property. His, his goal is to have about two acres of fruit trees on the property, generating crops and selling them to.
Okay. Three.
Thank you.
To the public. Um, and so we got that approval in July, as I said, and uh, they made a, the inland wetlands commission made a finding that he is allowed to create the pond as of right. And that, um, and so now we're here with a special permit application because it's an earth removal uh, operation to excavate the portion of his uh, property where the pond is going to be installed. And so to give you more detail as to the uh, that aspect of the project, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson to walk you through the specifics with regard to the location, creation and maintenance of the pond.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Todd Anderson from Anderson Engineering Survey and Associates, ten fifty-four Boston Post Road here in Guilford. Um, my client is proposing to build about a third acre pond um, on his property entirely within the wetlands. Um, in creating this pond, uh, it will be excavated by machine excavation, of course. Uh, the material will be brought uh, uphill onto the upland portion of the property, put into a staging area for de-watering and then removed from the property. Um, and on our plans, we show the soil erosion controls. We show the construction entrance into the property from Prospect Hill Road um, in letters from Kevin McGee and Janice Plaziac. Um, specifically, Janice, she, you will see a proposal to have that access off Little Meadow Road. That is not feasible for access to the de-watering area as there is a uh, steep slope up to Little Meadow Road to get there. And I feel that is going to cause more harm than good to the property um, and surrounding areas. Um, the area that we chose for that construction entrance, um, and also in the letters will be mentions of uh, street trees and so forth. That construction entrance happens between a couple large trees. Uh, one on the town property and two on the private, on Mr. Kermey's property. It, no tree removal will happen within the town's property. There are two small trees that need to be removed to uh, construct that construction entrance. Um, also in the letters, you will see questions about sightlines um, from that construction entrance, which we also thought of in the design. You can see clearly to the intersection of Little Meadow Road, and you can see clearly all the way down to the west beyond the property line on Prospect Hill Road. There is tons of stuff on there. There are a couple trees that obstruct portions of the sightline, but in calculating sightlines, single trees are not counted. Um, large brush masses are accounted, but single trees are not. So we do have sufficient sightline. So this occurs in the most level part of the property um, that de-watering area that poses is the most level property upland of the wetlands. Um, as part of our wetlands approval, we cannot fill wetlands. So another thing in the letters uh, get read to you, there are statements of proposed grading on the property. We cannot fill in any of the wetlands. So what you see for the limits of the pond, those, those existing contours, albeit uphill on the barn side, those contours will actually be about a foot, foot and a half cut. But on the western side of the pond, we do not propose to fill any of the wetlands because we cannot, under our wetlands permit as of right, we have to maintain the existing contours. So yes, the pond is going to be flat. So on the eastern side, yes, there will be a bank, but that is incorporated into the banking of the pond. Um, another thing that you will hear in one of the letters is what is the sloping of the pond and so forth. Um, we, Jamie, if you can go up to the upper right to the cross section of the pond for me, please? Go, go to, go to the right as you look at it on the screen. There's a cross, there's a cross section further up to the right. There you go. Um, so when, whenever we design a pond, we always design it for the first six feet in depth to have a slope of four to one, which means you have a four foot horizontal distance with one foot of drop. So it's very, it's a very shallow grade. And the reason why we do that is for safety concerns. Um, Mr. Kermey is planning on putting deer fencing around the property around the pond to keep deers and hopefully other animals out of his orchard, um, which will give some protection to the pond, but we always think of safety. So in designing this, we always design ponds as if somewhere to, someone were to accidentally slip into the pond, they can crawl out on the shallow grade and get to safety. And the reason why we go six feet deep is because by the time you're six feet deep, you're swimming. Um, and then from that six foot deep depth down, we do a two to one grade down to the bottom of the pond. Um, because then it uh, will stabilize that slope, create uh, kind of keep the slope um, from caving in on itself. And then we go down to the bottom of the pond. The reason why we have the pond at a twelve foot depth is because, and that's another thing that you will uh, read in the letter from uh, Mr. McGee about the stagnant water. We have it at a twelve foot depth because at twelve feet, the temperature difference from the bottom of the water to the top of the, for the, the water has such a temperature difference that the water has a turbulence that is naturally created by that temperature difference. So it, in a sense, it is a natural occurring transference of water up and down that does um, doesn't create a stagnant pond. Um, if during the summer months, he finds that that is not enough, then maybe he might have to put in a bubbler or sprinkler or something. Um, but that is always on a case by case basis with every pond we do. Um, more times than not, that will not be necessary, but he may find it will be necessary, but that is up to him to decide later on. Um, another thing that you will read is about what the proposed pump is. And I had um, conversations with my client today, and he has already talked with the irrigation specialists that have done the irrigation on his existing orchard. And they are going to be installing a submersible pump that will be down in the pond, which will create no noise. So there were comments about, you know, what is the pump gonna be? Is it gonna have noise levels and whatnot, but that submersible pump will be silent. Um, I do show a proposed pump location because in applications in the past for ponds, we have proposed, we have had either buried pumps in like a utility pit or in a small little structure, we have had pumps. Um, by the u- utilization of a submersible pump, we won't have a structure, we won't have an external pump, it will be in the pond. So you probably won't even see it. Um, the other thing, um, trying to, I, I just got these letters an hour ago, so um, bear with me here. I'm, I'm trying to cover all the bases before they come up, but um, I can't remember what else I wanted to say on the comments from the town staff. Um, so maybe I'll wait until the letters are read and then I can reply further. Oh, one, one comment. One more thing that Kevin said was that um, the wetlands commission approval. The wetlands commission approval. Only had tree removal for the pond. We were approved as of right. That whole area to the south of the pond towards Prospect Hill where it says proposed nursery area. And there is a second soil erosion control line to the west there. That whole area there, we were approved as of right to remove all of those trees. So I don't want his letter to be construed as we are only removing the trees for the pond. We are removing the trees in that proposed nursery area as well. And that is all as of right.
Right. Thank you. We should bring up some memos from town staff. This first one, let's have Mr. Freeman, if you wouldn't mind, reading the notes from Kevin McGee. I could share it.
Ready?
Yep.
November second, twenty twenty-two to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. RE Special Permit Earth Removal Operations. Charles Kremay, three one six Little Meadow Road, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven. Assessor map eighty-six lot two. The applicant is applying for a special permit for earth removal operations in connection. With the creation of a farm pond on the property, the plan shows certain. Creation of a point three acre farm pond to be constructed within the wetlands to supply irrigation water to a nursery. Plans for the project do not have sedimentation. Control procedures that are income. Do not have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with. Two seventy-three ninety-seven B subsection six of the zoning regulations as part of the excavation of the pound. Groundwater within the pond will need to be dewatered. No erosion control measures in construction days as are shown on the plan concerning the groundwater. De-watering methods. Erosion control plan should provide details for dust control and for sweeping any soil off the road for trucks leaving the site. To prevent soil from tracking onto the road, tracking pad should be increased to a minimum of fifty feet. Plans also do not provide proposed elevations for the creation of the pond as required. By section two seventy-three dash ninety-eight of the zoning regulations. The Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission at its July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting approved a permitted use as a right. Agricultural activities for the installation of an irrigation pond and nursery. Be planted within, without film material within the wetlands based on the findings. That the proposed point three acre pond is permitted use as of right in accordance with the inland wetlands water course regulation section. Two seventy-one dash ten A grazing farming nurseries gardening and harvesting of crops and farm ponds. On three acres or less essential for farming activity, the proposed pond has been determined. By the inland wetlands commission to be essential for irrigation of the nursery. The removal of trees is limited only to those trees required for the construction of the pond. A permanent depositing of dredge material. Or material lasting longer than thirty days from. Where am I? The completion of the excavation of the pond within the upland regulation. And upland regulated review areas, a regulated activity requires a permit from the inland wetlands commission. Prior to planning and zoning commission approval plans need to be updated to provide the following. Site plans need to be updated to show erosion control measures for the pond and watering. Dust control, road sweeping methods in compliance with the Connecticut DEP Erosion Control Manual. Site plans need to be updated to show proposed grading elevations of the pond. In order to make sure the natural resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. The town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. And de-watering activities. Soil stockpiles should be contained by self fencing and or hay bales. Soil erosion or sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the. Satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. All dredge materials shall be moved from the property within thirty days from the completion of the excavation of the pond.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Sir Anderson, just a quick question. It sounded like from your testimony that you were planning on doing most of these things, it just hasn't necessarily got onto your plans yet. Is that correct?
No, I, I missed a few points that I would like to discuss now. As far as de-watering that Mr. McGee spoke of. When you dig a pond, there is no de-watering involved. It's not like you're digging a small trench. And pumping water out of it to make it dry, to make a trench. In the excavation of a pond this size, you expect to have wet dirt coming out. Which is why we have a drying location for the stockpiles. So the soil will be excavated out of the pond, put into. A vehicle brought up to that drying location. Stock piled there to dry and then put in other trucks to move off of site. So there won't be any pumps pumping water out of that pond. So the de-watering that he speaks of will not happen. As to the comments about dust. That is a course of normal operation on any site. That if you get to the point where a site dries out. You have to have dust control. That we never addressed that on any of our plans. That is part, it's part of. Normal course and it's in the town regulations. That if it gets to that point, you have to control the dust. The other part about the tracking pad is on our plan, we show a twenty-five foot minimum. For the tracking pad. It's always on a case by case basis on. You know, we're hoping to do this in the dry season. Of course, now with approvals possibly being pushed off and availability of construction equipment. I am hoping that this does not happen in the spring because. If it can happen in the next month or two, then it will be in the dry season and all the better because. The groundwater will be at about maybe a foot and a half, two feet deep in the ground. And the upland portion will not be a mud pit. But if this happens. During a wetter time of year, then of course we have to increase the. Tracking pad and construction entrance. And, you know, have more controls on that. But that is also in the purview of inspections by the town. And they can. Suggest more and in my monitoring of it, if I find that, you know. A larger tracking pad is sufficient or required, we can add more on to it. To go in right off the bat and say do a fifty foot tracking pad. More times than not, pretty much ninety-five percent of the time. That is not required of any site and. You know, you'd be hard, hard pressed to find many construction sites in town. That even you utilize a twenty-five foot tracking pad. Take a, drive up Long Hill Road and see what their tracking pad looks like and you'd be surprised. But anyways, you know. In my monitoring of this, I will be suggesting whatever it takes to not have. A mess on Prospect Hill. And as far as, what do you? I'm not sure whether it's him or Janice said something about sweeping of the road. Of course, if it gets to the point where there is soil being tracked out onto the road. Yes, they would need to. Clean it up, but to have a sweeping schedule in place. I don't think that's been imposed on any project in town that I know of. And just while I'm talking, I read through Janice's letter while you guys were reading. Kevin's letter. And I want to touch on a couple of things that she said. About that access being a permanent driveway. It is not intended for this entrance to be permanent. The stone wall in that area will be moved to the side, preserved. The construction entrance be put in. And then at the termination of that project, the tracking pad be pulled out. Soil will be put back in place seated and the stone will be put back in place. If at any time, Mr. Kremay chooses to have another entrance into his orchard. Which I don't think he's intending to do at this moment. Of course, we would have to go to the engineering department and do their permit for an entrance. As is the case with anybody that wants to put a driveway in. But I believe at this point, his intention is not to have a permanent driveway there. So. Those are a couple of things that I want to just touch on there.
Okay. We have another memo here from Sonia Marino, Mr. Ted Sands. Let's have you read this one.
Sure, if you can pull it up. Okay, this is to planning and zoning commission from Sonia Marina. RSM. PH. November second. Twenty twenty-two. Re three one six Little Meadow Road map eighty-six lot two. The proposed pond on the above referenced property. Has an adequate separation distance to the subsurface sewage disposal system. Staking out the septic system to protect it from being driven over doing construction is recommended.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, do you have any problems sticking that recommendation?
As long as I have an as-built of the septic system, but I believe Mr. Kremay knows where his septic system is. And I believe we are nowhere near it. So no, I have no problem with that.
All right, and then last memo here, we'll have Kevin Clark, please.
Okay. To planning and zoning commission from Janice Pleziak, town engineer. I have reviewed the special permit application for the above referenced property. The project proposed an irrigation pond to be built on the property for fruit tree cultivation. Pond final water or top of bank elevation should be shown along with proposed grading around the pond. Since the site is slightly sloped. The proposed pond will require twenty-nine hundred cubic yards of material to be removed from the site. The average triaxle truck can haul about twenty-two cubic yards of material, so this will result in approximately a hundred and thirty truckloads of material. To leave the site onto Prospect Hill Road. Prospect Hill Road is a very narrow town road, only about seventeen feet wide. The application says that the yield of this size pond will approximately, will be approximately three times what is needed for the agricultural use. Perhaps a smaller pond with less material leaving the site is an option to consider. The proposed site plan only shows a ten foot wide proposed construction entrance built. Only twenty-five feet in length. I would suggest the construction drive would be made wider to at least fifteen feet. To accommodate large trucks turning onto a narrow road. Construction entrance be extended at least another ten feet in length. Also, if they will need this access in the future, they may want to make this a permanent driveway with a paved apron. Either way, they will need to take out a permit from the engineering department to build this access. If the access is only temporary, the stone wall should be reestablished when the project is completed. Any tree removals in the town right away will require posting by the tree ward. The steepness of the, the steepness of Prospect Hill Road is also a concern to the west of the site. The road is approximately a ten percent downgrade approaching Route seventy-seven from the site and a five percent upgrading approaching Little Meadow Road. Travel via Little Meadow Road may be the preferred route. Sightlines at the intersection of Little Meadow Road are restricted and need improvement to accommodate safe turning at this intersection. This has been a challenging intersection for sightlines for some time and the majority of the sightline obstructions are on the applicant's property. It would be beneficial to this project and the town in general if this was addressed by the applicant. Some brush and tree removal may be necessary to make this intersection safer. The engineer should show the areas needing clearing to achieve improved sightlines. The alternative is to utilize the existing driveway onto Little Meadow Road or build a new driveway onto Little Meadow Road for construction access.
Would you?
Yep.
Mr. Anderson or attorney BD, have you discussed with your client Janice's request about clearing some brush on that?
If I, if I may. If I may, I don't think Janice has been to that intersection recently. Because my client has cleared all of the brush in, I think. About six months ago, he cleared all the brush on his property to improve the sightline looking north. The sightline looking in the south is extremely limited. So for her to say that most of the sightline is on my client's property makes me think that she hasn't been there in a while. I was just up through there yesterday, just to take another look before the meeting to refresh my memory of the property. And looking to the north, the sightline is not bad at all, but looking to the south, it is impossible. You have to pull way out into the road just to make sure you're not going to hit, get hit by somebody coming north. Now, as far as where the trucks will be coming out of the property and where they are going to go. I don't know. My client hasn't hired a company yet for doing excavation. But if I had to guess, all of those trucks will be going down Prospect Hill to Route seventy-seven. That. Eight to ten percent grade that she is speaking of. Happens right after the stop sign at High Meadow Road. So those trucks will be doing zero mile per hour when they hit that steep grade. I don't see that as a problem with access of a triaxle getting out to Route seventy-seven. And more than likely that will be the preferred route for any trucks removing the soil. I can't imagine that they're going to be bringing that soil anywhere up Little Meadow Road. They're going to want to go down Route seventy-seven to either the highway or go north. Up towards Durham to deposit the material wherever they're going. I can't imagine that this soil is going to stay extremely local. So. I think that is the reply to that.
Okay, Jamie, I just had one general question is, is. It feels like there's a bit of a disconnect on some of these memos between the town staff and the application. Is there a reason? Why it's, there's some misunderstandings here?
Perhaps if you could point to something more specific, I could offer some guidance here, but as I did not write the memos. Everyone had the applications that are the materials for the condition.
If there isn't anything specific in your head, then the only thing I could say, then it just makes you wonder, Todd, if there just isn't enough information on your drawings necessarily for the town staff.
Well, I, I, I would have loved the opportunity to have spoken with town staff. And gotten their comments prior to an hour before the meeting. They have had this application for over a month. And they wait until one hour before the meeting for me to read their comments. So more communication from them and a speedier reply of any problems that they may have. Would be very well appreciated. And I run into this problem with them every single month. I'd actually make a motion to continue to the next meeting. So we have the opportunity for everyone to review this in the, in the fullest capacity possible.
I mean, before I go through that, Phil, I'd like to see if there's anybody in the public that wants to ask a question.
Sorry, just thought I'd jump in.
No, no problem. Anything else, attorney BD or Mr. Anderson from your application before I go?
I, I would also like to, I would also like to state that we have, I believe, five letters. In support from neighbors. That are happy with what Mr. Kremay is doing. And have no problems with them. So maybe those letters could be read into record as well. And as far as deficiencies of the plan. I think I've already spoken as to why that information does not need to be on the plans. And.
Sure, but there's a request. There's a request for. Your, your plans don't actually show the. There's a request for your your plans don't actually show the um the finish. What's it called? The finished site, uh not sightlines, the finished uh.
The finished grade?
Grade.
The finished grade is what the grade is now. We cannot change the grade.
Well, no, but you spoke from, you said that you were cutting from the from the.
That that will be, that will be in the edge of the pond. The 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 existing grades will run into the pond. We are not changing the grades. There there are no proposed grades. Because that grading will happen within the pond.
So the toe of the slope goes right to the pond, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Alright, um, any questions from any further questions from commissioners at the time, any?
Uh, yeah.
Larry, Larry Zola.
So i- if you explain to me a little bit more about how this pond works. So uh how do you get your twelve-foot depth? How's water getting into the pit? And how much will that vary seasonally?
Well, there there was a question from the wetlands commission. As to whether there would be enough water to sustain a pond. So we went out there with a very large excavator and dug a twenty-two-foot deep hole in the ground. And it filled up with water in a matter of thirty seconds. And that hole is still open and still full of water, even during the drought. That water was only about a foot and a half deep in that hole. So, um, eh, that pond will be a viable source of water. And even he could pump forty gallons of water a minute out of that pond and it will still fill up with water.
So.
Even though it's modeled.
A twenty-two-foot. Deep. Hole was had a foot of foot and a half of water in it.
No, no, a a foot and a half from the top of it.
Oh.
During the drought, a foot and a half from the top of their ground down to water.
So my 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 concern is I I want to make sure that we're not. For for better or for worse, robbing water from neighbors' wells. If 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 there's a sufficient water supply in that area, that's my big concern.
Everybody's wells in the neighborhood are dug to a depth of about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty feet. Those are from an aquifer. This is groundwater, which is totally separate from aquifer water. Between the groundwater and aquifer water, there is going to be several ledge layers. That separate groundwater from aquifer water. By pulling groundwater, we are not affecting any wells in the neighborhood. So that the there was that question before with the wetlands commission and. No, that it's two separate animals.
Uh, Kim Clark, I think you had a your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Uh, so first question is, what are what are your intended hours of operation during this whole thing? Just so the.
I know normal hour, normal hours as allowed by the current zoning regulations, uh pretty much eight to four.
Eight to four, okay.
Eight eight to four Monday through Friday, you know, it's not going to be a twenty-four-hour operation.
Okay. Um, my and my second question is more from my own curiosity. It's not really in our purview. It's for Mr. Kermay. This is like my own curiosity here. Since you're not bringing in Phil in creating berms in the new orchard for the thousand or twelve hundred trees. Are you anticipating that your your trees are going to grow well with wet soil and wetland soil? Their feet wet.
Well, Mr. Clark, I'd be happy to answer that question. First, uh insofar as uh Birmingham is concerned, as Mr. Anderson indicated earlier in the hearing. To the extent that I need to go back for additional authority before the inland wetland commission for the depositing of additional soil. Uh, I will do that. Second, uh, an interesting point of uh as relates to agriculture, not all trees. Uh, and or other uh plants or, you know, effectively all the same. Uh, as you use the expression wet feet, uh some tolerate it better than others. Uh, Asian pear trees are one. Uh, species of deciduous tree that appears to do better with relatively, uh, you know, moist soil, uh, others. Crab app, some species of crab apple certainly do okay and and other types of pears. Um, I'm trying to think of the other one that. I'm just drawing a blank, but it to answer your question, uh, certainly, there are some things that that would grow. Uh, without a really without a hitch, uh, including things like blueberries, but uh it to the extent that I need additional authority. Properly uh to to make a modification, I would seek that uh properly for the inland wetland commission.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Rosella?
Uh, yeah, again, to to demonstrate profound ignorance, because I know nothing about farming. It seems to me if the pond fills easily and I'm looking at the um contour lines. Why do you need to irrigate the proposed grove? There should be enough groundwater there.
Uh, okay, uh, because there is more than one place uh where I plan to irrigate. I have trees that are. Upland from there, including uh currently three hundred and thirty-five apple trees that are glowing, growing in the non-wetland area. Currently, as Todd had mentioned earlier, that is being irrigated by my well water. Uh, which I would prefer to irrigate with groundwater if at all possible.
I say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I think the reason uh if Todd is that you uh put the driveway to the width, it is that it's between some trees. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And normally with uh tracking pads, it's not so much the length, but how fresh you keep it, I think.
Exactly.
Exactly. If you if anything refreshing it does more than than anything.
Yes.
Alright, uh, any questions from the audience? We have a pretty limited audience here. Alright, do we have access to those letters, Jamie, that we can put up? Uh, and.
Uh, we sure do. I can pull up the first one here.
Sure.
Sorry, I'll try to zoom in a little bit.
That's fine. So this is so just the record for everyone, these are letters that are uh in support of the application. This one is from. If you would zoom down a little bit. Uh, from Ranson Ashley Hillier at uh ten Kendall Court in Guilford.
You want these read-ins, Scott?
Uh, typically, when we have this kind of a volume, we just acknowledge, we put it on the screen so people can read it. We acknowledge this and. And um where they're where they're from. So thank you, Jamie, can we go to the next one? Alright, this is from uh Lou and Ellen Pafumi uh at forty-six Dover Court. Uh, in support of the application.
Oh.
Fine.
Apologies, let's try that again.
This is from Bob Stinko.
Bob had both an email that was sent to me as well as a.
Letter.
Letter, and so I can pull up his letter here.
Uh, Bob Stankow is at uh one hundred Dover Court in Guilford. Again, in support.
Believe this is the last one.
Uh, are are these letter, are these neighbors in like in proximity to the property? I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, that's it's the next town, it's the next road, it's the other side of the property, nice road.
Okay.
It's next door, basically.
Thanks.
Yep.
Although I would point out, Mr. and Mrs. Pafumi are the property immediately to the north of where the proposed pond is.
Yeah, they're on Dover Court, though, right?
Right, but but their their property is immediately adjacent to the location of the proposed pond.
Right, and we're here, that that pond is directly in our backyard, uh can be seen. Quite easily, particularly in the winter months, uh from our the back of our house and um. And I just, I just want to say that we are totally in support of the of the project. Chuck has done. A beautiful job with that property in the twenty years or so that we've lived there. It's never looked so good and he. He has a vision for the property and he um in my many conversations with him, it's evident that he's. Entirely sensitive to the the environmental uh impacts of whatever he does and and he does things right. And uh with a lot of thought, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak in uh support of the application?
Uh, Scott, I'd just like to note that a lot of the letters. Uh, say the, you know, uh, author can see the pond, can see the property, and one noted. How much the intersection of uh the sightlines of the intersection were greatly improved.
Sure.
So that's already been done.
So Scott, just for the heck of it, there's no undoing this once you do it, right? Like you, you can't, you can't build a pond and then say, yeah, it didn't work out so good and then fill it back in, can you?
I mean, technically, you could.
I guess, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I see.
Whatever, thanks, sorry.
Uh, is there anyone that from the public that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. Attorney Beatty or Mr. Anderson, any any final comments? For this portion of your application?
No, I just think that, you know, we've attempt at at the risk of correcting Mr. Mr. Anderson, he may have received it. An hour ago, but I received it uh a little after, a little before five o'clock, the memos from from the town, so that's. Um, you know, he he forwarded them as soon as I got uh was able to around five thirty this evening, but I think we've addressed. Uh, we've attempted to address all the concerns raised in the memos by Mr. McGee, Ms. Plaziac. Uh, there weren't any um raised by the health director. Uh, we've reached out to the neighbors to get to advise them of this hearing. Uh, we've gotten the letters of support from several of them. Um, it's it's the it's for an agricultural use, which makes it uh a you a use permitted as of right uh in within the wetlands. Um, Mr. uh Kermay has already demonstrated his desire to. Uh, use the property in an agricultural way by making plantings of over three hundred trees, as he mentioned earlier this evening, and this pond will. You know, allow him to continue that that agricultural use of the property in a way that will, you know, benefit. His his neighbors, the town, and whoever he sells his crops to. So we we'd asked that the commission grant the application. Um, I think Mr. Anderson's addressed the engineering issues to show that the site can sustain the pond. Uh, and that uh the pond will help Mr. Kermay be able to wash his dishes and. Uh, take a shower and feed feed those trees at the same time, so that's, so we asked that it be granted.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so it to waive the second public hearing on a special occasion requires three quarters, correct, Jamie, of vote?
I'll make a motion to waive the second public hearing.
There are second?
Second.
Mr. Freeman, uh discussion?
I think based on my experience, the pond will go in smooth and and I think there's plenty of information for it to go in that way. I don't see any uh. Reason to show grade lines around a pond when it actually just grades right to the grade that's there. That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
And I. Yeah.
Action from like a budding neighbors, it it might be a little more hesitant, but there doesn't appear to be any. So, and matter of fact, it appears to be support, so.
I I I I find it hard to believe that it's not going to disrupt some amount of that slope, but you know, that's that's kind of nitpicking at the same time, so. Anyone else, any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, Rockwell vote, Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Frank D'Andrea?
Bye.
Larry Rosello?
Yes.
And I will also, yes, um, William would like to close, uh, propose a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
Like to make a motion to propose to close the pair, right?
Second, Phil, second from, I didn't see it.
Me.
Alright, Bill. Um, Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Frank D'Andrea?
Affirmative.
Larry Rosello?
Yes.
And I will, yes, will act on this this evening. Thank you very much. Um, that is the end of our public hearing items. We'll move on to deliberation of the public hearing items. First item, uh, William and Michelle Gilson to Heart Landing Map one oh six lot eighteen dash three zone R eight. Special permit aptus for accessory dwelling apartment. We have a motion that someone would like to propose.
You bring it up, I'll read it.
I'm prepared. Uh, that's right here.
Proposed motion, Gilson to Heart Landing Approval, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for approximately. A four hundred and seventy-seven square foot detached modular accessory apartment at two heart landing map one oh six lot eighteen dash three zone R eight. Submitted plans and drawings are as follows, miles of building plans, ranch model. O N one zero seven three three seven, prepared by Modular Building Systems of P A. Dated seven twenty-seven twenty-two, thirty-four sheets, site plan two heart landing M one oh six. B one zero one eight, L zero three Guilford, Connecticut. Dated July seventh, twenty twenty-two, revised November first, uh, twenty twenty-two by Nace and Young Engineers, Inc. One sheet, property survey, two heart landing, M one oh six, B zero one eight, L oh three. Guilford, Connecticut dated April first, twenty twenty-two by Nace and Young Engineers, Inc., one sheet. This application is approved with the following conditions. The application shall file with the town clerk an original copy of the special permit. To be approved by the planning and zoning commission. And shall furnish written evidence of the planet to the planning and zoning department. The the document has been recorded prior to the planning and zoning sign-off of building for building permits. Prior to sign-off on building permits by the zoning enforcement office, the applicant. Will provide a revised property survey showing the location of the proposed modular structure. This application is proved based on a finding that it conforms to the Guilford zoning regulation. Two seventy-three dash nineteen apartment accessory. To single-family dwelling. Is there anything below there? I don't know.
No, there is not.
Okay. Approval shall become, well, there was a little bit, but.
Oh, yeah, effective, uh, sorry, I'll bring it up. You got me there.
This approval shall become effective fifteen days after publication of the legal motion, notice of decision upon and upon filing with the town clerk.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I gotta start looking, you guys are fast. I'll get I'll get since Ted Sands there, um. Alright, discussion? I guys. Miss Mr. Phil, yeah, is that just a positive or you have some?
No, that's 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 a discussion question, like.
Sure.
This one's pretty slippery. I mean, I mean. We're we're putting a modular drop-in. And a a lot. That I think that was the original concern originally with accessory dwelling units, like how are we gonna like. Regulate, are we gonna allow people to just put in? I hate to say it, trailer homes on their properties and call. I hate to say it, trailer homes on their properties and call them accessory dwelling ones, units?
But it's it's actually not a trailer unit.
No, he he knows that, but he's talking about the like, there's no difference.
So so ten years ago, and I'll I'll throw Frank, help me out here because you you you've been with me longer than I've been with you. You know, it 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 was, you had to have a building that was in place for a certain period of time. And then we modified that, say, okay, it, you know, it doesn't have to have been an existing building. You could, you can build a new bill. But I don't think it was ever contemplated to say you could drop in um, a modular.
Well. So there's a there's a foundation that's going on. And modular is a form of, it's a building style.
I I I I.
Building, so it's just a way of building. It's not a way of style. It's built somewhere else.
I know, it's a, that's what I meant. It's a, it's a way of building. Um, so that term is rough. So, but really, Phil, what you're speaking to is, okay, if we just turn our, if we do what we have currently planned on doing, where we just let this become as of right, there's nothing stopping the way what you just described.
I know, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up as a discussion point. I mean, I'm not against, I'm I'm totally for accessory dwelling units, absolutely. I just, I don't want to see, you know, whether it's aesthetics or whatever, you know, someone drop in
Yeah.
modular units on every property.
Jamie, do we?
Right.
Do we have a plan to at some point discuss that whole question or?
I mean, I think it's a great question. A couple of uh, simple things I can say is that uh, because an accessory apartment will become as of right, it doesn't mean that the planning and zoning department doesn't have the ability to review building plans, setbacks, height, uh, all these types of things, so um, we would still, it still requires a zoning permit, but that's typically something that is coupled with the building permit.
Yeah, but can you, can you specify looks or?
Well, I mean, I think this foundation piece that you're talking about is an important distinction. Um, you know, design guidelines, we don't really have those for private dwellings, so I don't see how we could apply them to accessory. Um, but we do need to have a follow up conversation about this because, um, you know, there's a couple of other things that we just need to consider, um, and and the seamlessness of making this transition.
Yep.
If I could add on that, um, I never thought that I would be doing a modular unit um, because I'm very particular. I've put a lot of work into my home, um, es- especially in the past two years. Um, the company that I went through was in Colchester and when you see their models, you would never in a million years think that these were modular homes. Um, I think when you think modular, you do think a trailer. That's what I thought initially until I visited their place in in Colchester and, um, for what you're getting and the pricing and everything else, it actually is, they've come well along the way. I I was able to kind of match the cedar shingles to my house. I was able to match colors. I was able to to do a lot, so, um, it's definitely something to look at, you know.
Again, I I I think you've probably done terrific job, but kind of my concern is that the applicant that brings forward an application that has not done all the work that you've done, but just met the minimal minimum requirements and that.
I understand.
And then.
For me, you know, it was very, very particular about, I was very, very, I was more concerned about it matching my home and matching everything and matching, you know, as far as e- even down to my interiors, the windows, um, everything, I wanted it to match. Um, so I didn't, and this company that I found in Colchester, they were able to accommodate all of those things. Um, you know, I took the base of the model of how it was going to be laid out, but I changed the windows, I changed the doors, I changed the sink shingles. I changed everything so that it would match my house.
It's honestly, honestly, it it's, I think your application is wonderful. I I just I'm looking at it from a bigger perspective.
Yeah, and and Phil, I think a lot of us agree with you that there's some something to be discussed there at least. I know it's.
Well, I think that.
It's a political battle in a lot of other places.
I don't think it's germane to this conversation right now to to bring in this. I think we need to address this applicant and their, what she's proposing.
I I I'm fully in favor of this application. I think you've done a great job. I just think from a from a planning and zoning perspective, we we need to like take a look at what exactly we're gonna allow.
Got it.
Um, you know, are we gonna allow everyone?
Well, you know, I I I think, Phil, that the 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 thing that the comment that was made that was really important to me was that this uh, house is gonna be put on a foundation. And whether the house is built up from the foundation with, uh, you know, two by fours or whether it shows up on the lot as a as a modular, I I'm not sure that makes a difference.
I didn't bring up that point, but go, okay.
Thanks. Any other discussion points for this vote? Seeing none, uh, we'll go to Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Frank Andrea?
Yes.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Luck on your building. Thanks.
Have fun.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everybody's help.
Great. Would anyone like to make a motion concerning uh, Charles Kermit, three sixteen Little Meadow Road map eighty six lot two zone R five special permit application for earth removal operation section two seventy three dash sixty six, the Guilford zoning regulations. We do not have one for you.
Mr. Chair, uh, as I did receive those memos at four P M. today, uh, there's both crafted motion. Uh, I would ask that we uh, continue uh deliberations and I can craft a motion that is mindful of all of the uh, memos uh, for the November sixteenth meeting.
Make a motion to continue to November sixteen.
Okay.
Second. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, we, can we put this on the the first item on the agenda for?
There should not be, I think the plan, Jamie, is for there not to be actually a public hearing at all.
No, uh, there is. We have a, um, we have accessory apartment. I tried. It it's not an easy thing to tell someone, no, you gotta wait, you know, six weeks, so, um, you know, we do have uh, a conversion to an accessory uh apartment uh before us on the sixteenth.
Okay.
And and just a question, Jamie, uh, uh, you mentioned the motion taking in account the letters, but do you also take into account the applicant's rebuttal?
Yes.
Uh, to those in explanations?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Do you need to go back to McGee and Jennifer and whoever?
No.
This was his argument and what do you think about that?
Those are advisory memos.
I see. I have a question. Why are we postponing this if?
Because we don't have motions.
Uh, if you'd like to.
We we want to free range it? Uh, we can free range.
Not that complicated, is it?
Uh.
I mean, I don't know all the the words at the end there. We could pull them up, but you know.
You know, some, I.
I just hate to delay because of uh, the fact that we didn't have something to even work with, and now we make the the applicant wait another two weeks.
You know, I I hate to make Jeff wait, but I would rather do this right once than free range it and and not get it right. That's me.
I don't think it's any hard waiting two weeks to dot the i's and cross the t's. It's two weeks.
Well, are they they?
All right.
Jeff, what do you think?
I I understand completely.
Well, well spoken counselor.
Nicely done.
Um, there's the motion on the table, uh, with a second. Kevin Clark, yeah, your needs, you continue.
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Frank Andrea?
Yes.
Larry Zolo?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
With with sincere apologies, counselor, I I mean uh, I wish we could have done this, but we want to do it right once.
Uh, we understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, we'll move on to, we don't have any pending or new applications, uh, other commission business approval minutes. Was anyone able to review our minutes from last meeting?
Substantially correct.
I will second that.
So would anyone like to make a motion then?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Second, please.
From Bill. Second, Bill. Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Show hands. Any abstentions? All right, unanimously. Um, and next item, review of Ben Ben Noel proposed lot five and six buffer planting plan.
Uh, I didn't see that.
Great, thank you. Um, so I will, uh, through my email. Oh, you got it? Great. Thanks, Scott. Um, it's terrific. So I was actually, um, for commissioners who have not been uh, with us um, for too long, uh, the Benton's Knoll is a development off of Seacham's Head Road or maybe Colonial Road, I guess, um, uh, planned residential development um, that has been going on for about ten years, um, ten, eleven years. Uh, there have been a series of changes over time and there were some uh, challenges uh, for an abutting property owner, um, this this residence right here. Uh, and throughout the years, there were attempts to mitigate some of those, um, thanks, Scott. I I was doing my own cursor, but realized it's yours. Um, and I think, you know, this sort of existing tree line that you see here against the stone wall showing kind of like a sunburst, yep. Uh, those were trees that were put in place uh, to control some uh, stormwater issues and there was also that dotted blue line is a trench that was dug uh, to mitigate some stormwater flow. Uh, and really where about maybe geez, eight months ago, um, when I uh, became town planner, I picked this up as um, as a project that, you know, I really wanted to see come to fruition, um, because it's been a long time in the making. Uh, so working with uh, the abutting property owners as well as the uh, new owner of unit six, which is at the top left uh, of the drawing and the current owner of unit five. Um, working to devise this landscape plan, which would provide uh, basically a a natural screening uh, between the abutting property owner and the new property owners. And so what we've arrived at here, if you focus on uh, unit five, there will be six giant arborvitae's along the driveway. This is uh, slightly elevated actually from where those that trenches and where the existing pines are. Um, and the remedy here is that the giant arborvitae's will mitigate uh, headlights that um, the property owner, uh, when they pull into their driveway that uh, shows in the abutting property owner's home. So that's the mitigation there. Uh, also keeping in the um, lot five or unit five's backyard, uh, there will be three uh, great white pines, uh, and those are sort of off to the right of the, yeah, thank you, um, that will be planted there. Uh, that's right on the edge of the conservation easement. And that provides privacy screening to the backyard of unit five as well as uh, to the abutting property. Now, if we go to unit six, um, so there's a very um large, uh, I'll call it uh, grade change or height change, I guess, between unit six and the abutting property owners. Uh, the area where the stone wall is, uh, and that area between, yes, thank you, uh, Scott, the area between there um, from where the proposed plantings are to the stone wall is, uh, I refer to it as a gully. It's kind of a a depression. Uh, that's part of the existing conservation easement that was agreed to with the development. Um, as the developer has worked uh, to tier kind of the slope up to unit six, he has created a plateau in about the the middle of the grade. I mean, I don't have an exact number for you, but I would say that that plateau is about ten feet above where the stone wall is. So it tries to establish uh, through the planting again of, they're about five feet tall right now, um, uh, white pines uh, that will grow uh, significantly and there will be twelve of them kind of scattered. Um, you know, off center scattered from the corner of the new unit all the way up to uh, about the corner of the stone wall.
I would say that the white pine, Bill could probably confirm this, those grow significantly. They they can grow three to four feet per year. Um, that 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 those are big trees. Which is great. I mean, uh, they're great. Created great screening for the Comans um, and their property and hopefully suck up a lot of the water that was the 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 concern originally.
Right. Yeah. So, um, yeah, I mean, so so the plants are there, they're on site. Uh, the comments have reviewed the plan. Uh, the developer has reviewed the plan. The owner of unit five has reviewed the plan. Uh, we are a go. Uh, there was a commitment to get these plans plants uh, in the ground prior to the um issuance of a certificate of occupancy for uh, unit six. Um, and also, you know, to get them in the ground while it's still prime planting season. So, um, you know, one more caveat here is that uh, the development itself still has um, a final planting plan and a landscape plan. Uh, in order to meet the town's commitments to the abutting property owner, we um, kind of removed these lot five and lot six uh, uh, buffer plantings from the larger landscape plan and worked to just move that uh, forward and get it in the ground. Uh, the development's full landscape plan will most likely come before the commission for revisions in the spring of next year.
Um, I'd also note, there's a note there that if a tree dies within a year, they'll replace it.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah.
Yeah, no, it it it, this has been, obviously, you know, I I was contacted by the the abutting neighbors several times and it's it was never an easy conversation and I'm happy that things are moving in a positive direction.
Thanks, Jamie.
So Jamie, this this phase two of the planting plan?
Phase thirty two.
I don't know what, I don't know what phase it is, but this is, this this development's been going on for ten plus years.
No, I know, I know. Uh, I'm just, I'm curious. So so was the native, the use of native plants stipulated from the get go? Does anybody remember that? And the reason I ask is because I noticed on the on phase one trees plant, there's actually three species of trees that are actually not native. So I was just like, just, I don't know, I kind of noticed it and I guess if there's more planting plan coming before us in the future, something to keep an eye out for, that's all.
Yeah, I don't think this, uh, so, yeah, we have gone through several iterations in the past eight months, um, and I think the legend, this just kind of carries over because none of the, on the original uh, planting plan for the uh, lot five and lot six unit buffers, there were these, but you know, working together with all parties, we were going for height, we were going for screening. Uh, we were going for for density uh, and quick growth, so.
I think that, I think part of the problem might have been like, when this was originally developed, I'm gonna say ten to twelve years ago. Uh, there was more inclination for let's get this done than let's look at all the absolute detail. inclination for let's get this done than let's look at all the absolute details.
Right, right.
Um, there was certainly less talk about uh invasive versus indigenous.
So.
How many more units are left in there, Jamie, you know?
Uh, so, uh, unit six will hopefully get its certificate of occupancy the end of this year. And there's one more lot that is yet to be built upon. It's under contract, um, and they're throwing up the plans now.
Excellent.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yep.
But we don't need to act on this. We're, you're just giving us some information, correct?
Just giving you an update.
Super, great.
Anything else, Jamie, that we need to discuss or you need to have announcements at all for us?
Um, so Nigel and I have a power session, uh, basically half a day with Glenn Chalder on Friday uh to try to take much of the feedback that we've received from the Economic Development Commission, the Housing Committee, the Information Session, the Agricultural Commission, uh, you know, you name them. Um, all of the feedback that we've received trying to get that into a a revised working draft of the regs. So, you know, the the plan for Friday is really to kind of get everything together, divide the labor, execute and see if we can't get some revised uh regs out to the public prior to um that November um, powers session, which is the.
Nigel, you drinking from the fire hose or what?
I'm good.
Drinking from the fire hose.
It means you got a lot on your plate.
I've I've never heard that before either. That means like, ah. You've got so much coming down your plate that you you can barely handle it.
Oh, it feels like it sometimes, but I guess that's why I was hired, so, you know.
Alright, well, you know, never, never feel like you can't ask for help, okay? Lot of people around that have a lot of experience. Look at Frank, he's been around forever.
I mean, just look at him. I mean, that's indication enough.
So.
Thanks, Phil. Love you, buddy. Alright, uh, that's about it. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Second from.
Bill Freeman.
All in favor?
I.
Oh, we got one opposed. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Have a good two weeks.
Have a nice two weeks.
Phil just doesn't want everybody to leave. You just want to stay here forever, Phil?